Good evening and welcome to our December sixteenth Monday meeting. Thank you again for the pledge and a moment of silence for Madison, Wisconsin, school children and adults, teachers and so forth. First we'll, as we discussed over our last couple of meetings, we'll do a, actually, Leslie will be doing a presentation just on the water and sewer highlights of the budget. And so I'll turn it over to you. I think everybody should have a packet that was left on the counter over there. And I will turn it over to you.
Okay. Good evening. The first page on the slide is the water fund revenues. First line is the water rents. The adopted budget was a million one oh five nine ninety-one. The total billings through October thirty-first, which represents three quarters, was seven hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. And the total payments received through November on those billings were four hundred eighty-three thousand one fifty-eight. The next line is the water rent bulk. This amount was not budgeted and we received seven months of payments. This is one hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. And again, this rec, the first line represents three quarters, so there's still one more quarter of billing to be done. The next page is the water fund expenditures. First line you have your water operations, which is your pump station repairs and equipment, budgeted at one hundred and fifteen thousand. Actual through November thirtieth was seventy-two thousand three forty-four, leaving forty-two thousand six fifty-six left to be spent. The next line is administrative. This represents payroll, contractual expenses, utilities and engineering costs. Adopted budget was four hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars. Actual spent through November thirtieth was three hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, leaving a hundred and eighteen thousand nine sixty-four left to be spent. The next line is water purification. This represents repairs and maintenance, some testing on chemicals, ed chemicals, I'm sorry. Adopted budget was a hundred and forty thousand. Actual spent through November thirtieth was one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, leaving a hundred and thirty-eight thousand one eighty left to be spent. The next line is the water transmission wells. This represents equipment, supplies and repairs and maintenance. Adopted budget was a hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred. Actual spent through November thirtieth, seventy-seven thousand four oh five, leaving a hundred and five thousand ninety-five dollars left to be spent. And the last category is employee benefits. This represents the state retirement expense and medical benefits. Adopted budget, one hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Actual spent through November thirtieth, a hundred and forty-five thousand five ninety-nine, leaving forty-four thousand one ninety-nine left to be spent. Next slide is the sewer fund revenue. Total sewer rents and facilities for the adopted budget was one million five hundred thirty-eight thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. Total billings through October thirty-first, again, this is three quarters, represents one million two seventy-four one fifty-seven. And the total payments received through November thirtieth was a million six thousand dollars three oh one. Next slide is the sewer fund expenditures. So your sewer operations, which is your payroll, your contractual expenses, your utilities, repairs and maintenance and operating supplies. The adopted budget, nine hundred eight thousand three forty-three. Actual spent through November thirtieth, seven hundred forty-one thousand seven ninety-eight, leaving a hundred and sixty-six thousand five forty-five left to be spent. You have your employee benefits, which again is the medical and your state retirement. You have the adopted budget was one eighty-seven two ninety-eight. Actual spent through November thirtieth, one hundred forty-four thousand eight forty-nine, leaving forty-two thousand four forty-five left to be spent. Then you have your debt service payment, which is the payment on the bands and the bonds that the village issued, principal and interest. So the adopted budget at four forty-two nine seventy-five, and all of that has been paid through November thirtieth, four forty-two nine seventy-five. And then this.
If there's any questions also this evening, I have Chris Finnegan, a manager of our wastewater treatment plant sitting over there. If anyone happened to have any particular questions regarding water and or sewer, he's here to answer any questions. Paul.
Fourth line, ten acre length, water purification, that's chemicals, right? Chlorine and whatnot.
Yes, that includes, yeah, repairs and maintenance, testing and chemicals.
It's only eighteen hundred dollars so far? We just spent a ton of money in the last meeting.
That was paid in December, yeah, and that's not reflected on this. I did actual through November thirtieth.
Okay, and the other, or just in the other part of that quarter, Ed's question is, the, what did I just look at here? The, um, the water, the water, and with these two of the percentages, the water operations, where are, no, here we go, this one here, the water rents. We only got four hundred eighty-three thousand out of the seven hundred and sixty-two thousand bills, yet to the sewer, we got almost right on, we got one, one million six, one million six thousand three hundred and one out of one million two hundred and seventy-four thousand. That seems a little off, those two numbers. Why would we get more sewer money, you know, closer to equalization than water? Water is way off. It's almost not, little, it's not half, but it's, see what I'm saying?
Because the sewer that you see, that, those numbers include the facility use charge in it, what you've collected for that.
And we're almost collecting what we budgeted for everything, that's, that's, is that, now, when we saw water, that, and that was another question I had, when we say sewer rents and water rents, sewer rents is everything. Sewer rents is the facility charge plus the percentage of the water, right?
Correct.
So we're almost spot on with that part of the, but how are they, people aren't breaking down the bills, are they?
Pardon?
People aren't breaking down the bills, just saying, I'm gonna pay the sewer.
You'd be surprised, but we don't have a same proportion amount of facility use charges to the number of units. There are more facility use charges than there are properties in the village because of the commercials, the way they're charged.
Uh, okay.
Well, they charge per bathroom or something like that, is that the way it's done, like per whole?
No, no, it goes, it depends on actual type of property, like an office building is charged by the number of offices.
And the bulk water, the bulk water rent, how many gallons was that?
I don't have that in my head.
Nothing to get that for you, Paul, but I don't, it's not, not here.
What do you mean by bulk water, like the whole year, usage, the whole year?
The trucks, anything that was trucked out, out of gallons. So we make money on that?
Yes.
That's water that's moving and we don't tap?
Well, it's water that's coming out of the wells, right? That we have been doing pretty much since I think we got into office or it was requested. The money that we're making right now, it's eighteen fifty per thousand. The money that's been collected, as we've mentioned, month after month after month, is put into an account and currently being used for engineering, for P and D, as we're trying to develop a well over in the High Grove area. So that, that's where that money is seen to be spent.
Maybe I'll hit oil.
If we did well, that'd be probably the best.
Okay.
And we, and we don't really have much water at that point, so you can run water lines everywhere.
Just looking at the gallons.
The employee benefits for the water sewer expenditures. So we pay sewer managers, the water sewer, can we pay the retirees as well?
No.
So what?
This is like DPW, DPW employees, anybody's time who spends in water sewer is allocated across all the funds.
Yes.
You said you're spending a lot of money to develop the wells. I thought the wells were developed by spindler, drilled and?
Those are the spindler wells, the wells, the well I'm talking?
I'm not, sorry, not spindler, in High Grove.
Right, the well that we have at High Grove was drilled, but beyond that, there was no development of that well. So there were no permitting, there was nothing done to get that well to a point where you could use that water as potable water.
Wasn't that part of the?
I can explain that.
So, first of all, let me say, wasn't that part of the agreement when he was building? He had supplied enough water to, that we used to supply his housing that he's building?
You know, that was under David Hines's term as mayor, and I don't, I believe, remember what their agreement was. I know part of the agreement, and maybe this is what happened, but I'm, I'm second guessing it, is that the concession stand and that garage were built for future use rather than the well being constructed and built with a building and prepped to be used. I think that was done in the first.
That was before Hines, that was either you or Lenny.
No, I, I mean, I'm pretty sure I was on one of the boards, but the, the timing that it happened, I was not in favor of potentially the concession stand and what was going on, because I really felt that the well needed to be developed, and if they wanted to build, you know, a concession stand along with that, that would have been fine, but I think that needed to be done. But I could check, I mean, it's, that was, what, probably twenty, yeah, I think I was off the board in twenty-eleven, so somewhere twelve maybe, somewhere near maybe, I think? I don't know, have to look, I really don't remember.
I think it was way before that.
Okay.
Where are we at with our water?
Can you just name an address?
Wayne Palmer, Ten Becker Drive, Washington Devil. Where are we at with our water? We've had a lot of rain, thank God, for the past month.
Yeah, today's, today's water level is, for the two major wells, is twenty-seven two and twenty-six feet. So the wells are coming up as, as they should with the rain and everything else that we've been getting, so it's a good sign. Anyone else? Yes.
Pat Mitchell, Ten York Place. If we look at the water fund revenues, the total billings are through ten thirty-one are seven sixty-three two fifteen. What is the due date to pay those bills? What is the lag time?
Anything not paid by January fifteenth is re-lebbed onto taxes.
Okay. And what was the number last year? Do you remember?
We had well over two hundred thousand dollars re-lebbed.
Yeah, it was quite a bit.
And this year's looking like it's gonna be higher.
One second, I'm just checking the water levels in here. Chris, I mean, back to that question on the, on the amount of water, do you have any info on you?
Yeah, I do, yep. What do you want, for the whole year?
I guess year-to-date would be fine.
Okay, so I can give you, this year we've total gallons sent out was six million so far.
Six million?
Yep, which is fantastic.
Yeah, so during the summer months, I know he was between, I think we discussed again all summer long, he was between a million and a million five, and then it's, it, you know, end of the summer was eight to a million gallons.
Which honestly pays for your chemicals and pays for a lot of things that don't come in your pocket anymore, which is nice. Paul? Can I, can I make a point on that then?
Please.
Six million gallons? Wow. I don't know where to start. They, they budgeted fifty thousand and they paid in South Blooming Grove, six hundred thousand dollars for water. Now, it's not all necessarily coming from this one supplier, but, and we made a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. In Windsor, they send out, well, they were sending out a million gallons a day, a million gallons a day to South Blooming Grove, and they were making five point four million dollars in revenue from that water. I don't know that maybe we should?
Who is making five point four million?
Hill Windsor, August tenth board meeting.
Okay, was that, that water was going to?
South Blooming Grove.
I don't think so.
Well, August tenth board meeting, it's on minutes, it's on video. They started out at five hundred thousand gallons a day, and then they, they requested a million.
Okay.
So, but I'm just saying, maybe we should be jacking up this price and getting a little bit more money.
Well, we're, we're planning on raising that rate come the new year, and we'll take it, you know, we'll take that increase and, and take it and run with it, and, and do it the same thing that we're doing currently. We think that, you know, we will check around with other communities that have the ability to share the water, and we'll get those prices and we'll come up with a, you know, with an average fair price, you know? Billy had a question?
Yeah, just a quick one. One of the big spindler trucks, how much does one of those things toll in terms of gallons? Just six thousand?
Six thousand.
I would have thought more of that.
Yeah, so, okay. Anything else? Okay. Leslie, thank you very much. Chris, thanks for coming in, appreciate it very much.
Thanks for coming.
And, um, where are they, the money you're gonna be doing?
Yeah.
Thanks very much, Leslie, thanks. All right, thank you guys very much. So, at this point, we're off the public comment for agenda items only, if anyone has anything they'd like to ask or talk about. Thanks, Chris, appreciate it. Paul?
So on number four, the voluntary, voluntary water restrictions that were lifted, does that mean you can start selling water again? Of course, the wells are at the same level as they were last meeting.
Right, yeah.
When we stopped selling water.
Well, we stopped selling water when they were about twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
No, we never got there. I, I don't remember twenty-eight.
So, right now, no, I'm not planning on, the board is not planning on starting that process back up. If the wells get to like twenty-four feet, then we'll, we'll take a look and see what we can do. And again, because that, that revenue for us is, you know, for, for well development and, you know, that's not money that's coming out of our budget, it's not money coming out of, we're not increasing rates to, to do what we need to do. So, you know, while that's available, we'll go for it. I did hear through a number of different resources that South Blooming Grove has created a couple of wells that potentially will be online in maybe six months or so, which is going to potentially give them the water that they need, and they will no longer need to potentially get rent or get water from other municipalities. But, you know, like I said, I heard that secondhand, but from engineering firms, so if that information is reliable, then that's what's gonna happen. So, but we'll wait for the wells to come up. We are prepared to use the spindler wells, everything is set. We can have wells ready to go within a couple of days' notice, and, but we've hold off, we were actually prepared to do it right after Thanksgiving, but we had that extra rain and everything else, so the wells came up, so we canceled that, and we're just sitting tight and just monitoring. That's where we are. Okay. Any other questions on the agenda? Yes, sir?
My name is John DeColo, with J and G Law, here on behalf of Mr. Kazaza to speak, and his family to speak on the comprehensive plan that I see is on your agenda to set a hearing on. I submitted a letter November fifteenth regarding the initial review of the plan and raised some concerns. I saw as it relates to Mr. Kazaza's property, which is the largest undeveloped property in the village, and really wanted to just spend a minute or two just explaining some of the concerns and hopefully working with the board to come up with a balance that will allow you, allow Mr. Kazaza to, you know, realize his retirement plans and develop the land in a manner that will be a benefit both to the Kazaza family and the village, and help you provide some much-needed housing opportunities and diverse development opportunities in the village setting that will provide tax benefits, provide users to support your businesses, and really work together to come up with a balance for the community. Because as, as you know, the law in New York is that you are required to provide diverse housing opportunities for not just the needs of the village residents, but for the needs of the region. And anyone who looks at the paper can see that we are experiencing a dire housing crisis in the entire country, but especially here in the Hudson Valley. So this property is an opportunity to provide that and also to provide some flexibility, to provide potentially some uses such as a hospitality use, or some flexibility in zoning, that will provide you some ratables as well, and provide people who come to the area to support your downtown businesses, which, you know, I believe could use some support because there's, you know, cement, the buildings. I've looked in your code, and right now, this property is proposed a proportion of it for agricultural businesses, and I don't think in a village located in this area that using the word agricultural business zone is really something that's inappropriate. It said A B in the map that I saw, I'll be correct on.
It's currently some residential.
Currently residential.
But the proposed comprehensive plan proposes it for agricultural business, which it's been, been hedged in a portion of the strip for, for some commercial uses. And currently now, PUDs are permitted, which we think would be a really good use to continue to provide, you know, more denser and diverse housing opportunities, small lot, single family, some apartments, some potentially townhouses. We, the Kazaza family believe has provided a concept of a plan, you know, that we would work forward with the board to discuss and implement it. Because, you know, looking at, I think it's laudable that you want to continue to allow apartments in the downtown area, allow active adult housing and veteran housing, but I would also say, you know, we need to provide housing for the person who plow the streets so that we all can get to work today, for the people who work in our hospitals that we visit, for our teachers, for our essential workers that, that we've learned. And I don't see that as a priority plan, always devil is in the detail, so I'm not gonna, I'm not coming here to criticize you or, or to say it, but just to raise some of the issues that I think we can work together, and with the timeframe, but I know, you know, the village has been in a moratorium, but what I'd like to do is just offer that opportunity, and if there are any committees or meetings that we can present some of the information to you, come up with something that, you know, is not going to be something that you, something that you could be proud of, but that could still provide a much-needed service and a much-needed opportunity for more people and younger families to come live and revitalize your village. So with that, you know, if you have any questions on the answer, I just wanted to let you know we will be here and be available, you know, to meet with the planner, to provide that information to you, and look forward to order.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, Mr. Kazaza, you know, I had invited you this evening to come and present if there was anything specific that we, after looking over the comprehensive plan, you, can you hear me? Sorry. I had invited you to come present this evening, because this is the last meeting that we will have as a village board prior to the public hearing. So on January sixth, the comprehensive committee is holding that public hearing.
Isn't there a comprehensive meeting this Thursday?
There's not, it's canceled.
That's been canceled?
Yes, because according to our planner, there is no more reason for them to be meeting.
And then we'll be here on January sixth at the public hearing.
Correct. And you can, and you are welcome to come and speak there as well, but the email I sent you, I think it was last week, mentioned this date, since it's prior to that public hearing.
Yeah, you invited us to come to this meeting to address divorce.
Correct.
Do you want further presentation? Do you want to meet separately, or?
No, you were welcome to present this evening, if that's what you would like to do. You can also speak, obviously, on the sixth.
And, well, obviously, we have several major concerns about the comprehensive plan and the way it's been structured. I've been going to most of those meetings, and I've tried to put in some input, but the plan takes probably eighty percent of the most developable land and burdens it with a view shed, which no one has been able to define exactly how restricted development will be. That's coming close to being a taking of the land. We're also concerned that part of the land was scheduled for an expansion of the downtown business area. I think the downtown business area doesn't need more competition, I think that what it needs is something that will feed additional services and demand for services into the existing downtown. We have two vacant bank buildings, we have some vacant storefronts, we don't need to create more space to compete with them. Also, agricultural business use severely restrictive can be done. I would love it if there were a lot of agricultural uses around like there were in the nineteen fifties when I was here, and everywhere you look were farms, but that's not realistic now. And we're the only area in the village that's designated under that new proposed zone, that A B. So we have some very serious concerns about this. So we'll be back on the sixth and we'll present those as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
I would just add, and I'm, I'm sorry if I was confused when I looked at the agenda, I didn't know. We do have plans that we can submit to the board, and whether it's the sixth, whether you want them in another meeting, because as you go through it, the comprehensive plan committee may hold a hearing, which they can always hold open, but you as a board are gonna have to do the environmental, you know, the secret compliance and really examine what are the impacts on the plan, what impacts is it gonna have on the ability of young families to move into Washington Valley. I haven't seen a lot of that research in the, in the plan to determine that that has been well thought out by your comprehensive plan committee at, at this point. It looks like they've given a lot of concepts, but how those concepts will impact your village and how it will impact life for the people who live there, because sometimes you can look at pictures and forget, you know, excerpts from other plans in Westchester County and different counties, and it looks nice and it sounds nice, but when you do the actual implementation, you say, well, is it realistic? What's it gonna cost? And who's gonna be able to afford it? Then the analysis would be, you know, a little different. So I apologize if you, you know, expect a plan, Mr. Kazaza did send the email to us, we do have a planner and engineer, I'm an attorney, so I'm not going to be able there. And our engineer was not able, you know, to be here this evening, he's at another meeting, but if you let us, if it's on the sixth, or if there's another date you prefer, that we could come with a plan, we certainly would, would do that. So I'm not, you know, saying like this, again, I apologize if there were any.
So if, if you have those plans and you wanna forward them to me, I can forward them to our planner, maybe she can review them prior to the public hearing. And at the public hearing, so as far as my understanding goes, it is, that will happen first at that meeting, and then they will resume and discuss the comments that were made at the public hearing, and they will come back that same evening and then present that to our village board. Then we, at some point in that near future, we will also be Then we, at some point in that near future, we will also be holding a public hearing.
Okay.
And that will include the zoning piece as well. So the 6th is strictly just the comprehensive plan, not the zoning?
Yeah, I understand, but you do have to be secret for your comprehensive plan as well and, and examine those issues. So I think, I don't know where you are, but I think you do have some work to do in my aspect and, you know, I haven't been involved, but I have been involved in many comprehensive plans over the last thirty-five years and I think there is some work to do here to get this in shape that, that would be adoptable and supportable.
And if you have plans you would like to vote to me, I'd be happy to receive.
I can bring you down to the village hall sometime later.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
On it, just on that same, just on that same topic, that's going to be emergency night because you have a regular meeting. You got, that night, January 6th, it's like crazy busy. You got a regular bit, regular meeting?
Yes.
You got a budget meeting?
Yes.
And now you, you know, now you have the public hearing.
Correct.
Just, I don't know, just didn't know if you were aware of all those things going on one night.
We're aware.
We are, we are.
It's going to be a late night.
Bring your pillows.
Anything else? Okay. Thanks very much for your comments and we'll look forward to the plans. All right, so just announcements and some discussions regarding, last Saturday was our, the Whoville event and the Christmas parade that occurred and everything. I want to report that it was very well done. It was a little cold, we didn't, we weren't as busy as we thought we would be in the afternoon hours, but it did pick up a little bit and then after that, the parade at six o'clock went off really well. There were really not a lot of incidences or anything that was, you know, disturbing as far as that goes. So our event committee and the Chamber of Commerce did a great job in organizing and bringing it to, bringing it all out that particular day. I'd like to also thank our DPW for the decorations and the event committee for decorating downtown. I think it looks really nice, a lot of nice comments, so again, that's, I don't know if anybody on the board has anything, or Chief, have you had anything you wanted to add? No? Okay. All right. Second item is the Emergency Alert Communication System, which we now call Co-Red because it's been, we went off the old system called C T Y. And we just want to try to make sure that everybody is signing up on this particular website or the application. So you just go to our website, go halfway down the homepage, it's on the right in red and basically put your, your information in there, email, cell number, home number if you have it, so that you can be informed of what's going on from a public standpoint or an emergency standpoint. There are a number of people that we've been talking to that haven't enrolled and that's the reason for the communication tonight, to try to get everybody to sign up and, and stay informed with activities within the village. Okay? Another item, three, is basically the hunting season obviously is here and we just want to reiterate that there is no hunting within the village's limits. There was some Facebook things flying around last week and we just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, that there's no, any type of hunting regardless of gun, bow, anything. So if you do, obviously, there's penalties and so forth, so just please, if you see something, say something to somebody who might be interested in, in hunting within the village limits, but it is definitely prohibited. Thank you very much. Next is the voluntary water restriction, so we are lifting that as of this evening. Also, the outside fire pit burning ban, that was also lifted as of eleven thirty twenty-four, So fire pits, if you want to be outside this time of year, you can, you're, you're okay to do so. Also, the water levels we covered were twenty-seven point two and twenty-six gallon, or twenty-six feet on both the major wells that we have, so static on that. Also, we've been approached and had a letter from a Gotham E V proposal for the village parking lot, so we are waiting for some more information on this plan. They're looking at potentially four parking spaces at our municipal lot in our downtown area. We've also alerted them that maybe our other lot down at West Twenty-Nine Main Street would be an opportunity as well, only for their, for the reasons that Coach Bus is, is renting spaces down there and that could possibly be a good location too for potentially another four. So we're waiting on their proposal, it would be leased spaces, they would pay, you know, a dollar amount up to potentially two hundred bucks a month. So we'll see where that goes and when we get their proposals and everything else, we'll, we'll let you know what, what that looks like. Penny, do you have a question?
Could you put that, like an R P out on the street and maybe get some other people that get better rates? Is that possible?
Um, don't know of any companies that are doing it, but yeah, we could certainly put an R P out and see if anybody would be interested.
Maybe you could make some more money on it.
I have a question also, aren't we sort of restricted on our parking spaces already? This would make it specifically for E Vs to park there?
Well, it would and that's why we're kind of mentioning West Twenty-Nine or Twenty-Nine West Main Street, because that parking lot is a little bit more open. And we, again, we don't know the diameter of, the size of these things, they say they're, they're mini, they're small.
Yeah, they're small.
But we don't know, you know, if they need more width in, in the spaces and that kind of thing. So once we have everything, we'll kind of, we'll take a look at it and see if it makes sense, talk to the building department.
I wasn't worried about the size of that, I'm worried about the spot being reserved for E Vs.
Right.
If somebody else parks in there, they can get, wind up using what a ticket for parking in the E V spot.
Potentially, yeah, good point. Yeah, I mean, it's a busy lot, we noted that, we said if you need to come down and, and spend a day just watching that lot fill up and empty out a couple of times, especially when the Dan School is active, that thing is, is very busy, so.
Does anybody use the chargers at Fulton Square?
I've seen a few cars there, but I don't know. Yeah.
We don't do that a lot.
Yeah, I don't know.
I thought it's Twenty-Nine West Main, you have the high school kids who park there during the day, so there's charging stations for their cars, it would be helpful.
But they can't leave it there all day to charge, can they? Can't leave your car in the spot there?
Yeah, people charge them overnight.
Yeah. Next is the, if anybody is in need of a COVID testing kit, they are available here at the village hall, so just come down or call and we'll have the kits available for anybody who might be in need of them. Also, we did, I'm sorry?
Wear your mask.
Wear your mask. Regarding the drinking water state revolving fund grant for the High Grove and Water Treatment Plant, we did apply for a grant. Unfortunately, our information was very good, but they ran out of money, so they've asked us to reapply next year, which we will do and hopefully be in, favorable to get the, get money for the development of that well. So we'll keep you updated on that as well. Pickle bowl courts, we're trying to keep them open, we've got school break coming up if the weather is nice, hoping that everybody will still use that, use the courts. We had people out there this past weekend, it was pretty chilly, but they were out there in shorts and having fun, so we'll, you know, we'll monitor that as we go. Update on the roof of the plant, that was supposed to be pretty much done by this coming Wednesday, but with the weather over the next two or three days, that will probably be extended. They have been working on the facade going around the building, looks really nice, it's fine, it's similar to the other buildings that we have, so we'll, we'll wait and see until that's completed. And we've discussed the village comprehensive plan, which is on our website for downloading and viewable, obviously to review that. And also your public hearing, as we mentioned, is set for January 6th and to review the comp plan with the comp plan committees, it's actually going to be their portion of the meeting. And just, I guess, an extra note, that's been in the news and everywhere else for the last couple of days and weeks, is the drone situation. We did put some information out there for everybody to contact, you know, they're asking not to dial nine-one-one if you do see something, they're asking you to reach out to the state police on crime tips at troopers.n y dot gov. And then for the FBI, it's tips dot F B I dot gov or call one eight hundred, call F B I. And they'll be able to take your information if you happen to see something of concern. Okay? Anything else from the board regarding any announcements? All right, so the first resolution.
Does the board have any comment on the football league?
Do we have any comments on the football league?
It's kind of a challenge for the town.
Well, not knowing both sides of what's going on, you know, not really that much, to be honest with you. I mean, we're listening to the concerns, but I think, you know, as an organization or those parents, they are, you know, gathering their own resources and going to have to make some decisions on what they want to do.
I mean, I realize it's a separate entity and so forth, but just.
Yeah, but we did receive a lot of phone calls asking for, you know, help and whatnot. The town's also a little bit involved because obviously it's town fields and they're just trying to sort, sort through all of that, so.
All right.
Thanks.
I just wanted to throw something up from the last meeting. Last meeting, there was a discussion about, I think it was you who had asked about some of the open projects that were now under the moratorium and could not move forward and one of them happened to be Thirty-Six North Street. And then we started to discuss whether it was a, it is a single family and it will remain a single family, not a two-family. So I just wanted that for the record.
Great, thank you. All right, so moving on to the resolutions, twenty-four zero two one seven, to attend the Orange County Association of Town Villages and City, that conference will take place from February fourteenth through February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five in New York City. If anyone is interested in attending any of those days or classes, please advise ASAP so we can make arrangements and get ourselves registered. Okay? Has a motion, can I have a motion on that, please?
No motion.
Don, I have a second. Steve, who in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next resolution, twenty-four zero two one eight, to schedule a public hearing to be held on January sixth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M regarding the local number one of year twenty twenty-five to extend the opening hours of L Vernon Park until nine P M for pickleball play. Have a motion, please?
I want to give a vote to what the government is doing.
Give a plug.
Good luck.
Good luck. You have a motion? Steve, second, Vernon. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you. Resolution twenty-four zero two one nine, to schedule a public hearing to be held on January sixth, twenty twenty-five at seven oh five P M to consider the village zoning comprehensive plan as received and recommended by the Village of Washingtonville Comprehensive Plan Committee. Have a motion, please? Don, Steve. Every, any questions, comments? Who in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Wait, no, I'm going to go there.
The zoning.
Sorry?
It's not the zoning, but here, you have, it's just a comprehensive.
Sorry.
Dylan, do you want to jump in?
It's not going to be.
We just need to revise the, the resolution.
Okay.
So revision to the public hearing that it will only be for the comprehensive plan, not the village zoning as received and recommended by the Village of Washingtonville Comprehensive Plan. So will we rescind the previous vote? All in favor? Or I'm sorry, I have a motion on just the comprehensive plan.
Motion.
So I have Don, I have Steve. Any other questions, comments? Good catch, thank you. Anybody have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next is resolution twenty-four zero two two zero, to approve the Architectural Review Board signage application body by Julia, which is located at the Brotherhood Mall, Julie, sorry. And again, which just for the sign has been approved also by the building inspector as far as the location and, and everything with the store itself. The motion, please? Steve on the motion, second. Vernon on the second. Questions, comments? Who in favor? Motion passes five zero.
And that sign will look like every other sign, most of the other signage, the red.
It'll be red.
Yeah.
Oh, there you are.
I'm here.
How did you get there?
I am behind the pole there. Yeah, the sign, remarkable and the golf shop, they're connected, the same company that did their signs, red, about the same size, so.
Yeah, it's good. We'll sign off on the paperwork tonight or tomorrow morning and we'll be in touch so you can, you know, proceed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next resolution, twenty-four zero two two one, to appoint Christine Shankman as municipal employee to the open board ethics membership position effective this date, December sixteen, twenty twenty-fourth. Have a motion?
Motion.
Steve?
Get it in.
Second, Vernon. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Congratulations, thank you.
Really.
She's swearing, you're in.
Chief Mattel, Washington. Patchy's all yours, figure away. Yep.
It's been close to two years, over a good year and a half of looking.
All right, so our next resolution, twenty-four zero two two two, to authorize budget transfers and amendment says necessary, to effect necessary transfers of funds to pay, to pay village warrants. Have a motion, more? Steve, second? Vernon? Questions, comments? Who in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. And the warrants are, or the abstract is floating around, so if you guys will, please sign off on it, I would appreciate it. And just for the audience's appreciation, so out of our general fund, this particular K round, we're, coming out of the general fund will be a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents and the majority of that is our January twenty twenty-five premium for our State of New York Civil Service. And out of our water fund will be three thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars and out of our sewer will be four thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy cents. Okay, on the public comment.
Well, two things, real quick. Number one, on the incident reports, they didn't have the police department on it, so I was going to do that, but I figured I'd let you know because maybe one of you guys on the board could make the ringaling. The auto parts guy, I feel like I'm driving down Fordham Road when I come into the village sometimes. He's got his three cars out there. He's got the, the trunks open on the cars, like, okay, we're going, we're loading the car right now, so we're going to stay here. And they stay for, they're there for a long time. There's seven businesses along that stretch. It's Christmas season, people are shopping. I know the lady in the, What a Girl Wants is upset and, but I don't know if she called you or if she, she probably doesn't want to call you, but there's free, you know, he's got free cars there. You know, come on.
Well, the problem is he's kind of landlocked at the moment, because there's a little bit of what's going on behind the building. So there's three basically, there's an alleyway and I guess what they're trying to figure out or determine is when you look at the tax maps, that five and I think it's seven, right, which is the hook and ladder and Sonia's store, What a Girl Wants, basically when you go out the back door, that property comes, extends to where the fence is and then kind of makes an L turn to the parking spaces along that fence that was there is designated on the deed at least, what it looks like it's for five and seven, which is the hook and ladder and they own the building. So if you go to Mike's store, the auto parts store, he's in the center. Now that piece of property that runs between. Now, that piece of property that runs between the edge of Hook and Ladder to 208 is a separate piece of property, which appears to be owned by Mike. Mike's Auto. And that's what the deed is kind of reflecting. So everybody is going in and looking at their deeds and getting the details out of them because the Hook and Ladder, which never really used in the back of their area, is now planning on, like, come spring, is to have some tables and chairs and outside kind of dining.
East Main Street. He can take those cars, put them in the municipal lot.
So prior to everything I just said, those cars would drive right into the back of the auto store. Today, they can't do that.
From where? Where would they drive from?
In the back of the parking lot.
From the municipal lot?
Municipal lot, they would drive right into the back.
So they could still be in the municipal lot, and when they need to load, come right around in front and load.
I know. I haven't worked with Sonia. I haven't really, no other business has really said anything about it.
Nobody wants to complain, but.
Well, it's not complaining, but it just bring it to our attention, so potentially we can do something. And a side note, what we actually were trying to do, because that place gets actually deliveries sometimes two, three, four in the morning. And they park a 16-foot kind of a truck in those spaces. Now, sometimes the tenants are parking on the street. We've asked those folks to be parking in the back where it's safer for their cars and at least the parking spaces are open. Because if they stay out or they don't come outside till 10:00 or 11:00, all those spaces are now being occupied. So what we actually were entertaining and trying to figure out if it would work is put in some type of, take a space, extend it a little bit, and put a loading zone in so that there would be a spot for vehicles to come, take your 10, 15 minutes, load your trucks, and, and travel on.
Take a lot more than that.
But, well.
Take a lot more than 10, 15 minutes. They never will be.
Well, I know, there is three cars, the ones that, at least that I've seen. And they pull in, you're right, the trunk is open, and they're bringing brakes and starters and all this other stuff that they deliver to auto shops. And they're just bringing out the stuff out the front door because it's restrictive now in the back because it's private property back there. And we're trying to work and get the building inspector to talk to these guys, but if it's private property, it's very difficult because they're even parking cars over there. The people that live upstairs on, I guess it would be One South or One East, they're living upstairs, they're parking their cars in that space. So Mike's shop is landlocked. There's no way to get there from 208. There's no way to get there from the parking lot because the Hook and Ladder has their parking lot roped off and, and they're kind of preparing it so people get used to it, that they'll have tables and chairs and, and, you know, seating for outside dining in, in come springtime. So they're kind of at a crossword or road that they're locked into parking there. But yes, I agree with you that they really shouldn't be there all day. They need to park their cars. If they're gonna go in the store and they're waiting for something, they should park in the back in the municipal lot like everybody else.
Well, the second thing I want to bring up on a lighter note, I want to report a possible burglary.
That's a lighter note?
Since the chief is here. I think, I think that the visiting attorney broke into Chris's house and raided his sock store.
That's a crime right there.
Yeah, he got, he got, he got those socks. He had to get those socks from Chris.
See what we can do. What pair?
Should I text him, are you missing socks?
He might be.
He's got crazier socks than me. I'm surprised every day.
Those are his Sunday socks.
I know, I had to try to beat him today.
Okay, that was the important one right there. Yes, sir?
Just one, one comment. My name's Earl Steves.
I'm sorry, give me an address.
My name's Earl Steves. I'm the other part of the Cazaza parcel on 19 South Street. I just wanted to call the board's attention to the fact that the, that our farm has been in agriculture, been farmed for 200 years. My, my family's been farming it for the last 70 years, and it's been a, it's been a very active dairy farm. And, I mean, I've lived on, lived on the farm for the last 70 years. I'm currently now living in New Jersey. But the, the comprehensive plan calling for the, the AB business, agricultural business, unfortunately, for the reason that my dad had to get out of the dairy business, is that the economics of agriculture in Orange County have changed dramatically. And in fact, our farm is actually the last farm in the village, very few farms in the, in the county, in fact. And there's just no, there's no demand for agricultural business because there are no, there's no agriculture in the area that would want to locate, that needs to locate a business. I think you can all remember, if you've been in the village for some period of time, you know, Soterno's used to be the ag repair equipment place to go. Soterno's has been closed for 20 years, 30 years, something like that. And there's just, at this point, there's, there's really no demand for ag business. So just, just call your attention to that, and certainly we will be providing some information to the, to the village as far as some uses that would benefit the village and benefit the residences. So thanks for letting me add that.
You're welcome. Thanks, Earl. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Sean Hager before Bellboard, I have a couple of questions. One is, how many hydrants are still in service? Fire hydrants?
The hydrants have been ordered. I don't know if they came in, so I think it's a total of two that might be out of service.
There's not bad for makeup, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've been ordered three because they want to have one as a backup, one they were able to repair.
Right.
The bench, the marble bench I brought up a while ago that was hit, you know, viewing, overviewing the lake.
Yeah.
Are they gonna repair that or are they gonna leave it? It needs to be epoxied back together or something. I pushed the leg back in today.
Okay, did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you know? Yeah, ask the other thing.
Before, and they had to remove the entire bench.
I think it looks like somebody's epoxied it recently, but somebody's hitting it with something. I thought it was a lawnmower. I think I may have seen a lawnmower at one point, but.
What we'll do is, we have the name of the person. I didn't realize we had that. We'll, we'll reach out to the family and ask them what they would like to do. And come spring, we are gonna put the concrete around the bases so that they're stady and it's easier to clean. Peas is on concrete. There were two that weren't. Okay, yours isn't. And then the new one.
The concrete on it, that one is not even as wide as the bench.
Right.
That's why, if they get that close, they're gonna wreck it.
Got you.
The icing at the end of Ahorn and Coleman. Somebody's gonna slide and go in there. Something needs to be done with that. It's iced almost every morning recently. You know, you want to lower the drain or whatever over the summer, so. It's been duly noted.
Yeah, well, we're planning on doing that road. We'll have to take care of it, obviously, until spring and whatnot, but we are planning on doing North Street, so that will be one of the main, major considerations, especially that slope. And put some drainage in there so it goes right into the storm drain.
And then the last thing I have is the outflow in Burn Allen. I see the leaves have been cleaned out. It looks like they just let it flow. Now it's clogging at the other end.
No, I think actually some, I might have to check with Chris to see if we actually got out there and did that or it was actually done, I want to say by John Mack, because he brought it to my attention.
Well, maybe, I don't know.
And when he showed me.
Clean, it needs to be, that whole outflow needs to be cleaned, all the way back to the beginning. When they dug that, the last time they cleaned it, they used a two-ton bucket.
Yeah, I don't know.
It was a flat-bladed bucket.
Yeah, I mean, weather permitting, right now, obviously, it snowed, so those leaves that were pulled aside, I was gonna get the guys out there to blow them, get them out of there, so they wouldn't flow if the water got. You talking about going under Ahorn?
Yeah, there's not many leaves. There's small little piles about that big, two of them.
Yeah, I was there.
The rest is on the other side of, that's flown through. I don't know if it's the same leaves, but.
Okay.
But they still need to clean out all the rocks. They need to clean that whole outflow out.
Well, a lot of the rocks were left there or put there because of the soil, it's for the erosion stuff, is what I've been told. So between the water coming down from, I'll say, Capitol Drive and, and Decker Drive and how that, how those pipes come across from the pond area where Paul was sitting and doing his bird watching. All that water comes through the pipe underneath the Ahorn, then catches and then runs across underneath the little bridge by the playgrounds and then continues. So that whole piece needs to be looked at and cleaned up. I, I was there this Saturday and it, it needs to be done. But a lot of the rocks there are there for soil erosion when the water is really running. And I talked, you know, talked to the engineers, I said, what would it be there for? It ain't, it's not there for being pretty, but when I was there, the rocks were moved to the side. There isn't really anything impeding the flow of the water coming through the pipe. But I think from the backside of the pipe down to the pond that runs in the direction of the dog park, that needs probably some maintenance, so we'll take a look at doing that stuff. So it looks that it would maybe flow a little bit better.
Well, if you were down there and you walked along that pipe, it's almost full of rubble all the way to Ahorn.
Yeah, that's what I wanted, yeah.
All that and straight on back. You just stick them in there and clean that out. They're all misaligned where they hit them with the exonerator. Further towards Newcastle.
Towards Newcastle.
It's a mess.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Anyone else? Ken, Vinnie?
Can you land for the pro court? Since we're loading up January 6th already with lots of stuff going on, can we throw out another local law for irrigation use? Any progress on that?
I'm sorry to.
Irrigation.
It won't be January because we have too much other stuff in there.
It's on January 6th.
Oh, you know, Vinnie, you want to stay here till midnight, don't you?
It's done before spring. Yeah, we spoke about irrigation years prior to the, to the change in the park hours. The building inspector, is he officially off the books, Mr. Terry?
Officially off the books.
Because he's still showing on our website. So have we put a job posting out? Is there an opening?
No.
No, because we're utilizing, we contracted with Blooming Grove.
So we're, we're not gonna actively look for our.
No.
Any update on the police contract?
Still in negotiations with it right now.
I thought we were settled. We're just waiting for lawyers.
That's.
We're still negotiating or are we at a point where we have an agreement?
No, just wording, not, not numbers or dollars or anything like that. That's basically what.
Are we adding that?
I'm sorry?
Are we adding that?
No, we're, we're.
Because we got a budget coming up. That's why, you know, how are we gonna manage a budget where we don't even know what this contract's gonna be coming forward?
Well, we know the numbers. It's just some of the verbiage that we're trying to change and they're trying to change. So that's where we are right now. We had a Zoom call last week with their attorney, and at this point, we're just making some minor changes and then they're gonna show it to their members, we're gonna show it to our board and see where we go from there.
Okay, shall we expect a proposed budget online to the view prior to the meeting?
Do you believe score? No, 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 the.
Budget, budget. We should have that up before the end of the year, Tim.
What's that?
We should have that up before the end of the year, right?
Yeah, I'm thinking somewhere week of the 30th. Gives solid week before. Working around the holiday, et cetera. But also just, actually, I forgot to put it on today, but the, and the 29th of December, there'll be the menorah lighting.
Yes.
You want to give that, yeah?
It's just, we call it Jewish families bringing their indoor celebrations outside. We will have the menorah down at Village Square, EJ Square. Songs, some prayers, and, you know, just to celebrate the miracle of Hanukkah.
On the, on the, going back, you said we have a contract with Blooming Grove for the use of building inspectors. We have an IMAT.
IMAT, that's what we have.
Okay, have we, how, are we within the guidelines yet? Less than $40,000, less than 25 hours a week? Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're at 40, and we have three inspectors here any given day, which is good because they're doing lots of safety inspections that, you know, just weren't done. So they're hitting the real sensitive ones, like the preschools. In fact, they had the report.
She said 15 fire inspections, 14 had failed originally, so now they're going back for re-inspections.
Yeah, all the restaurants have been hit, daycares. And, but the goal is everything, but they're trying to hit the really kind of important stuff first. And they're hitting all the commercial old downtown, which haven't been really done in a long time. So they're working with the business owners and the building owners to bring things up to, up to speed.
And they will be done annually now.
Right. Yeah, just permits are being done on time. Doreen is really doing a great job for us and, yeah, I mean, it's night and day. So it's, it's turnkey and it just, it's happening, which is great. Anybody else? With that, can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel matters? A second?
Second.
Have a good night. Thank you. You too, Sally.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
You too.